Charlie Ward is on.
Yeah.
Good timing. Yeah, I gotta get some break work done, so get ready for winter.
Yes.
I couldn't. This mask is pulling my ears down.
Drives me nuts.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Prior to us calling the meeting to order, I would like to, first of all, make sure that our city clerk can hear us and is online. Lynn Fazekas, I see your name is on the board. Can you hear us? Lynn, you may want to unmute yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those of you who are in our audience tonight and would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, we'd ask that you kindly fill out a speaker request form. They're available from our executive assistant, Ruth Scott, and we'll get those up to me and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. Those who do want to speak to any item on the agenda have the option of speaking either during section D, public participation, or if you would prefer, you may simply wait until the item on the agenda is before us and you can speak at that point. We also have several people on Zoom. I believe we have one speaker tonight from Zoom who would like to participate remotely. I'm delighted that all of our city council members are with us tonight, and I'd like to ask our city clerk Lynn Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Saver.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight aye.
Thank you. It's been a couple of months now that we had the search completed for an assistant city manager, and we were delighted to see one name come to the top of the list. We appointed him as our assistant city manager. He spent a number of years with our city police department, so I'd like to ask Josh Bolt to come forward so that you can see him. He takes a lot of compliments. He necessarily, he won't necessarily take criticism, but Josh, if you'd come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, if you'd stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh. Great to have you aboard as our assistant city manager. Okay, I'd like to move along to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions, first of all, to the agenda? Prior to approving the agenda tonight, I would like to, number one, have a motion; number two, have a second, and I understand that we have someone in the audience who would like to speak on the agenda itself. So may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic, and I understand, Mark Charvat, you'd like to say something about the agenda itself?
Just a quick note, there's an error on page six of the agenda narrative where the Finance Advisory Committee's meeting on October 19th is referred to as its "regular meeting." No meetings of the Finance Advisory Committee listed on the annual list of meetings published by the City of DeKalb are regular meetings. Therefore, the Finance Advisory Committee does not have regular meetings, so there's a Scrivener error there.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Yes.
Saver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as printed. We now move along to public participation. We have a number of folks who would like to speak, although I have indications here that only a couple of folks would like to speak early on here in the meeting. The first should be with us on Zoom, and that is Amy Levine, who lives at 208 Miller Avenue in DeKalb. Amy, are you with us? Amy Levine, are you with us?
I'm here.
Good.
I can't get the video on Zoom to work, however.
Okay, well, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
We hear you loud and clear. If you'd like to make your statement, please.
Okay. Increasing diversity among our elected officials is and should be an objective of the citizens of DeKalb. The slate of officers, and in particular, older persons, who come from DeKalb's different racial, ethnic, economic, and cultural groups, is one way to achieve fair and democratic representation. We heard this over and over and over in meetings early this summer. With that aim in mind, I'm dismayed somewhat by the proposal to decrease the already low compensation for elected officials, even though I heartily appreciate your seriousness in considering ways to cut the city's budget and your concern for how this might look if asking for concessions from other city workers. I'm really impressed by the seriousness with which you approach this. I probably don't need to tell you, but for the other citizens listening, all of these positions involve many, many more hours than those spent at regular council meetings like this one. Older persons sit on commissions, they read and prepare documents, they meet with constituents and others working with the city, they attend public events, including those at schools and for our youth, answer emails, prepare reports and informational social media for us, and engage in other duties. While the work some weeks might total five hours, other weeks it could be as much as 25 hours. At the current salary of $5,400 a year, it's possible for an older person to take home less than minimum wage, and that will be worse if we decrease the salaries. Lowering already minimal salaries sends a signal to some that only people who don't really need fun are welcome in these positions. You on council are one visible result of these low standards, a group that's white and mostly male. As dedicated as you are, you do not reflect the realities of this city's population. As empathetic as you may be, you can't fully understand the range of residents' experiences. One of the arguments I've heard is that public service should be its own reward. Whether it's intentional or not, this belief contributes to white supremacy. It's an example of how systemic racism can be almost invisible. I ask, where did this belief arise? Historically, who is this belief privileged? Who is it excluded? Is it reasonable to believe that someone who needs to be fairly compensated for their work isn't committed to the job? Or maybe the conviction like that is just a little bit insulting to hardworking people? I was brought up that there's nothing shameful about needing to work for pay.
Three minutes.
And serving the public was an honorable way of doing so. Undercompensating people who serve the public can lead to the response, "They don't pay me enough to do this at critical times." That's not an attitude to be fostered among city workers, especially for minimal savings to the city for about $3,600 a year. That's just not very much money.
Amy, you're at three and a half minutes.
So let's keep the long-term goals lesson of diversity and effective local governance in mind and drop this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
I hope you can get on Channel 14 on either Metronet or Comcast.
I am on 14.
Good, and view the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other person who would like to try to stay within that three-minute limit. He's heard me say that before, and that's Mark Charvat.
By the way, we are pleased to announce that there were over 20 participants in our combined wards four and five first virtual citizen meeting that we had last week. As a result of many more email conversations that took place in the coming days and several questions from residents, as well as answers from the police chief about policing questions that came up during the meeting, we had a really great turnout and discussion. There was also, I just want to kind of summarize some of the things. There was discussion about the development of South Fourth Street, the liquor license at the Long Mat, concerns about crime, concerns about infrastructure and housing. Most people listened, as this seems to have been a new experience for just about everyone. The video of the session is available online. You can go to the City Barbs website. A link has also been posted on the neighborhood.com website, if you're on there as well. Our hope is to continue these meetings with at least one more attempt before the end of the year. Maybe other wards that have similar meetings and concerns or are interested in having meetings, a special thank you goes out to Herb Rubin and Bill Feldman, whose technical Zoom expertise gave us the ability to put this together. Citizens getting together to exchange thoughts and concerns is always very helpful, and also I want to let everybody know there was no staff time involved, no city assistance to put together this meeting, yet the staff does benefit from hearing what the citizens have to say directly. We also like to thank those elected officials who decided to listen in and participate just by listening in. Mayor Smith was on hand for the meeting. Fourth Ward Alderman Perkins, First Ward Alderman Morris was in attendance. Several South Side DeKalb County Board members listened in. Notably absent, unfortunately, was Fifth Ward Alderman Scott McAdam. So Scott, perhaps you would want to join us on our next fifth ward meeting in the future. You're more than welcome to join us. Quick other item here, kind of dovetailing on the ward meeting, there was a lot of discussion regarding crime. That was probably the number one thing people discussed, and one of the things that was brought up was the citizen, Police to Citizen Portal on the police website. Now, for those who don't know, there was a mapping feature, which the council discussed back in February, as you might recall, and we were told this was going to be brought back for discussion. This allows the citizens to see where the crime is at visually represented on a map. That feature has been missing since February, and I know this council said they were going to bring it back to talk about it, and I know what Mr. McAdam's, when he did have a ward meeting back in the good old days, the citizens wanted that feature brought back, and I know some aldermen were concerned that putting little red dots on a map makes the city look bad. You have to be honest with the citizens. Please bring that feature back, so hopefully we can have a discussion about that. Also was brought to my attention that you can only access crime data going back 30 days. So why are we limited to the 30-day limit? Thank you much.
Thank you, Mark. Now, is there anyone in the audience who has filled out a speaker request form who would like to make their comments at this time? If not, we will wait until we get to the item on the agenda to which you'd like to speak. Thank you. Moving right along, item E, presentations. We have no special presentations this evening. We have no mayoral appointments this evening. Item G, consent agenda. Our consent agenda, as you know, is usually enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of each and every one of these items unless someone would like to request that, in which event the agenda item would be removed from the consent. Does anyone have any desire to remove any of these? If not, let me read the consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 12, 2020. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through October 26, 2020, in the amount of Number three, investment and bank balance summary through August 2020. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through August 2020. Number five, the Freedom of Act, Information Act FOIA report, September 2020. Number six, hospitality recovery program update, and number seven, FY 2020 Human Services Funding Third Quarter Report. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Perkins, excuse me, moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Finukin. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Saver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. There are no public hearings this evening. We have one consideration, and that is the consideration of the annual property tax levy in the city of DeKalb. Prior to turning that over to city manager Nicholas, we have one speaker who would like to speak to this item. Once again, Mark Charvat.
The headline here is, "The City Wants a 10% Increase in Property Taxes for Its Coffers." Last week, the Finance Advisory Committee met in this very room, and in the exact words of senior FAC member Tom Teresinski, and I'm quoting him now, you can go back and watch the video, quoting now, "That's a $600,000 increase, or just about a 10% increase in property taxes on the city portion of the tax bill. The norm that the council had been using was a flat number plus new construction." Tom Teresinski's very own words in this very room here. So, you want to increase property taxes by 10% during a pandemic. You know, people in this community are barely making ends meet. They're visiting food pantries to get their food. You have local restaurant and bar owners and employees who own homes and places of business that are shuttered because of the governor's lockdown orders and the enforcement efforts of our local health department, and you're telling these people, along with your friends and neighbors, "You're going to pay 10% more next year because the city wants the money." Let me give you a Halloween analogy here. You ever see a horror movie where the vampire is stabbed with a wooden stake through the heart? The one thing you never see in the same movie is someone chopping off the vampire's head. The vampire is already dead. That's precisely what you're being asked to do here. These businesses are on the verge of dying, some have already, some are already dead, and now you want to charge these businesses an extra 10%? Now, the options presented by our city manager to the FAC, I'm sorry, I'm going to use the phrase, absolutely pathetic, Bill. Why was there not a fifth option to consider by the Finance Advisory Committee? All four options presented, presented a tax increase. In fact, option number one was a 33% property tax increase for the city of DeKalb. Mr. Nicholas prepared background material for tonight's meeting in the material. He fails to mention that FAC member Tom Teresinski desired an option five, which did not exist. Option five would use that flat number plus new construction that would be lowering the rate to 1.1069, if you want to keep the tax dollars paid by the citizens in your community exactly the same. That represents the 4.09 township multiplier for 2020. However, option four, recommended here that you guys are going to consider, will present a property tax increase for every single property tax owner. This is the largest increase that I can remember that this community has ever seen in 20 years, in a couple of decades. What needs to be done by this council is the willingness to make deep budget cuts, which it has failed to do. Freezing salaries of salaried employees is not enough. We need to cut these salaries. Other municipalities have done this. Why DeKalb seems to think they can conduct business as usual absolutely makes no sense, and here we go again.
You're at three minutes, Mark.
Final sentence here. If you did this, if you cut, made the proper cuts, you could cover the increased pension obligations, and you could pay for them from the general fund. 10% tax increase, unreal. Those are Tom Teresinski's own words. I called him to verify that he said that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, with that, city manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to draw your attention to a few things in the background, and I'd like to dig in on this for you, for the members of the audience, and also for people looking in tonight. In your background, as a matter of reference, I projected a couple of tables here. One is simply to look at last year's breakdown of the different rates that resulted from the levies charged by all the local prop, taxing bodies, and it's on page three of your background. And then below that, the levies and the rate-setting EAV for the city going back 10 years, and it gives you some idea of what happens and what has been happening over a significant period of time. And then, as we dug into this at the FAC, I went to some extent to talk about the ingredients that go into the annual property tax levy from, just from the city of DeKalb. Other taxing bodies have other purposes to raise property tax money, and the city of DeKalb has traditionally looked to raise money to cover its fiduciary responsibility, that's a scary word, so it was basically our pension obligations and also our debt obligations. And in more recent years, we have not been able to raise enough money to cover our rising state fire and police pension obligations, and we have been trying, though, to continue to pay the library's GO bond, which is now a little bit less than a half a million dollars. In fact, this year it's about $485,000. But because of COVID and because of the significant drop in a variety of city revenues, it's just not going to be possible to also rely, as Mr. Charvat said, on property taxpayers who, some of whom are really constrained right now in their own family spending. And so, before the Finance Advisory Committee, the options that were proposed are in your background, and the first couple were throwaway, clearly, and as explained to the Finance Advisory Committee, nobody was contemplating seriously a 30% increase, or even 20%, or even a 10% increase. So, but by way of explanation, the reason these were posed is because you can see in option number one, we were covering our fiduciary responsibilities, and I just pointed out what it would cost if we were to do that. It would be about $1.7 million more than option number four was presenting for option number one. Option number two, all right, let's cut this debt back to what the actuary says will not gain ground on that 2040 target that we have for our fire and police pension obligation to be 90% funded. We're somewhere low, below 50% for our fire and police pension, but it would keep us the same in terms of the percent of the full funding. But that was also going to push our property tax up over a million dollars. And then levy option number three that was posed to the Finance Advisory Committee was $7 million, and again, too much, but we were trying to pay a little bit of the library bond with a lower allocation for the fire and police pension. And finally, option number four that was presented to the Finance Advisor Committee was to say, all right, we'll pay all of the library bond out of the general fund revenues, which is basically out of the reserve. We will only pay a fractional amount of that money that should go to the fire and police pensions, and you come to that number of $6,865,743. Now, that resulting rate, based on what we think will be the community-wide EAV, was going to be about 2.7%, 2.8% lower than it was last year. It was going to be 1.223%. Except, we find ourselves in an unusual circumstance. The township multiplier is 4.09. So instead of seeing an actual out-of-pocket net drop in some dollars paid to the city, we were going to see an increase in the dollars paid. So what do we do, and why is there a multiplier? What is that? So a lot of people don't know, but township assessors are obligated to take note of the Department of Revenue's guidance every year on how to equalize the assessed valuation of property within the region. What does that mean? It means because, in our case today, because property values have been rising, because home sales are hot right now and have been increasing in value over the last three trailing years, there has to be an adjustment up across the whole tax base in the township, 4.09%. That affects businesses, homeowners, and others. 4.09%. So that's a big jump. If we only look to increase our levy based on a percent that would get us below last year's rate, we would still be increasing the net out-of-pocket dollars that homeowners and businesses would have to pay. That's a dilemma. That's not something we control. Now, there have been multipliers in the past. The last time there was a multiplier of this size, and it's actually higher, was in the very hothouse conditions of the early 2000s before the crash in 2007, 2008, and at that point, I believe in one of the years it was up to around 7.5%, 8%. That was a multiplier, it was a lot. By the same token, in 2011, I believe, the multiplier was down about that much because the three trailing years of eight, nine, and 10 were so dismal, and there was a drop in the valuation of the community's wealth. Okay, that's all by way of background. So where are we? Well, the Finance Advisory Committee supported the city manager's recommendation, and the city manager's position at that time, my position at that time, was we are dipping into our reserve, which also affects our local taxpayers, and we're trying to remain liquid so that we get into next year, and if we continue to have the drag that we have on our revenue and so forth in order to maintain services, which people say they want us to do, we'd have to go even deeper, and if we don't get any kind of resolution to stay level with fire and police pensions, deeper still, and how would it be next year when we see some new value to our tax base because of Farrar and Facebook, if our rate all of a sudden had to jump to balance the books? So there's a balancing act here. It was with no relish or enthusiasm that I recommended a rate, even though lower, that might result in an increase in out-of-pocket contributions to the city. Now, how much would that be? I've got a couple slides for you. And first, I took my property tax bill, and then I'm going to describe, I didn't think you wanted to look at a lot of graphs, what it would be like for the median household value in the city of DeKalb. the city of DeKalb. So, I don't know. Can you see this in the audience? Is this big enough? I don't know if it is. I don't know. Is this working? Can you see that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay. Let's just follow this along. So, Nicholas House, in 2019, had an EAV of $101,343. I have a homestead exemption, local homeowners do. That's $6,000. That meant my net taxable value, that's the EAV, one-third of the market value, is $95,343. And that's a pretty accurate number because I just bought my house in DeKalb in October of last year. So this came out about that time. And last year, at the 2019 tax rate of 1.15493, the amount of taxes I paid to the city for both the bond, there's a portion of it that went to the bond, and then also that went to the fire and police pensions, was $1,101.14. Okay. So we have a 4.09% township multiplier. That runs my taxable net value up to $99,488. And even though the rate is lower, look what happens. There's a higher number there, $1,216.55. If we went with option number four, that's what I would be paying. I don't say this because I'm feeling bad about that. I'm saying this is what the actual value would be. That's a difference of $115. That's an increase out of my pocket. Now, the average, according to the local railtors, and we haven't had a census in 10 years, but we had a special census, and we're going to get some more census data. But in order to go to the bond market in the last month, the numbers we got from Moody's for our area and the Federal Reserve show that the median, so that right in the middle, those of you who know statistics, of every property, every house property in town, was $154,000 and change in 2020. So take a third of that. We're at $51,000, all right? $51,000. If you take $51,000, does the average, oops, Jeff, can you push that back? Did I do that? Thank you. Off the page there. $51,000. And if that household had a $6,000 homestead exemption of $6,000, we get to $45,000. Are you with me? $45,000 times last year's rate would have required the payment of about $520 to the city. Okay. So at an equalizer of 1.049, so 4.9%, that raises that $45,000 net taxable value to $47,205. And if you take the new proposed rate of the 1.1223 times that, you get $530. So that's an increase of $11. $11, but it's still an increase. All right. So I have a new levy option for you. Go to the next slide, please. Or just run this up, Jeff. Go to the bottom of this. I'm sorry. I didn't see it on there. Okay. So, at the FAC meeting, Mr. Teresinski thought that if we got somewhere to around, as Mr. Charvot said, about 1.069, I believe it was, we would have basically hit the sweet spot, a balance, where the people at the mid-range like me or people who are at the average of $154,000 should be paying actually less out-of-pocket in their property tax to the city alone. We can't speak for what the school district will do, the park district, and the township. It's over. Okay. So, what I've proposed here, and I proposed for you tonight, and I think is pretty straightforward, I basically took 5% off the top. And what we've got here is an increase of 4% in the levy of $252,877. And it would be a levy of $6,522,456. And the council has copies. It's the third table on the bottom, okay?
Yeah.
And the rate that results from that will be 1.0662. And the difference, and here I've got my own EAV. Where is it? It's not working. Oh, there it is. Sorry. It's in, it's at the bottom in the green there. You can see where we end up. It's about a $40 drop in actual taxes, but the actual rating decrease is 7.68%. 7.68%. That's the lowest rate increase we've had in a long time. And you can look at that earlier in your background. You can see what's happened with the rate. I think this is a sound way to go. And you're making a decision tonight, not only about individual property owners, but also about what happens to the property tax that comes to the city. What do we do with it? So now, Jeff, can we go up to the next, slide number two, or slide number three, please? Okay. There's that $6,500 in blue. Do you see the blue? Sorry, the pointer's on it. Oh, there we go. Look at that.
Wow.
Huh? Go to slide number three, please, Jeff. Is that it? Okay.
Let go of the button.
Oh, let go of the button. There we go. Okay. See that? Right there. All right. So what is this chart about? This chart breaks down all of the city's general fund revenues. And you can see where the property tax comes in, right there. We are going to have a total revenue for our general fund of $36,239,761. And that's a couple million, 2.5 million less than our budget for the current year. It is an increase of about $1.4 million over where I think we're going to end up this year, which has a lot of ifs to it, as we all know, what happened with hospitality businesses between now and through the holidays and so forth. But that's the best we have to go on. Okay. Let's go down, just page down a little bit, Jeff, so that we can get to the spending side. Okay. That's the revenue side. But this is actually a double whammy. So what we save on the top has to come out of somewhere to pay the bond and the fire and police pensions. Now, go to slide number four, please, Jeff, if you would. So here is just a quick look at where we would have been if we wanted to go with option number four. There are two tables here. The top table had the city levy of 6.865 million. And that shows we were going to pay more in here, in the levy for the, these are just fire and police pension. The bond payment for the library is not on the table. Okay? If you look over here, the difference was $1,031,368. So see what happens when we add the $343,000. You see that yellow? So that's got to be paid. This number, this 7.897, which is the same as whatever the levy is, has to be paid. That's what it means by being a fiduciary responsibility. And so the levy, you see, we went down. So we have to come out of our general fund reserve with that. We've increased the take out of the reserve by $343,287. That's our only rainy day fund. That's our liquidity for this year, for next year, for whatever happens. On the way in today, I was listening on Bloomberg Financial News. So what are the medical experts saying now? Well, they're saying even with the onset of vaccine and so forth, and better testing and all the rest of that, instead of being the third quarter of 2021, which is what we thought we were planning on, it looks like it might be the end of the year, 2021, before we really level off and businesses can reopen and so forth. That's a darker prediction than what we had just a couple months ago. And we can see the closing of the hospitality businesses has not dampened the ramp of increase in new cases. So there's a lot more to it. There's a lot of layers out there and causes. So, the short of all this, and I know I've been going on for a while, is that I recommend the new option that I presented to you tonight. I talked to Lynn Neely this afternoon, the Chair of the Finance Advisory Committee, to brief her. And no one on the committee is going to complain about having a lower levy, but she wanted to know where we were on this chart. And I explained that I thought we had enough cushion. But if you look, and now go up to file number four, please, Jeff. Or three. I'm sorry. We're on four. Three. With what I've proposed tonight... Go up a little higher, Jeff. Or the other way. There you go. There you go. So, we have a policy that says we have to have a balanced budget, and we also have a policy that we should have 25% of our annual general fund expenditures in reserve. So we went from, on the reserve side, we went from almost 30% down to this number, which still looks okay in terms of percentage. But look at the dollar number. Now we're down to $364,581. You forgave more than that to, in terms of restaurant bar tax, to our hospitality businesses back in March. So it only takes a couple of months of no revenue to get us down to the break-even point. So I say we can't go any lower than that, even though some of us would like to have even lower taxes. But, and who wouldn't? But I think balancing everything together, what we need to maintain services, what we need to meet our pension obligations and debt obligations, and taking into account the great majority of property taxpayers in this town, I think what I presented to you tonight is the best option. And I'd like your support for that because we're just two weeks away from presenting you with a draft budget for review for five or six days before we actually get into our pretty intense meetings on the 16th and 18th of November. So we need to know pretty quickly. This was new information to you, but the essentials are pretty clear. Lower taxes for out-of-pocket. It's not hundreds of dollars, but it's lower than what people paid last year. And the rate is significantly lower and by almost 8%. And in the middle of COVID, as it was said, that's pretty remarkable, balancing other things against that. Now, there's always a caveat. And here's a caveat. With that 4.09% equalizer multiplier, I think our EAV expectation for next year, the $611,750,000, is pretty safe. But we don't know. Right now, we're coming into the time for property tax appeals. And last year, there were more appeals that were upheld than we ever expected. And so we're a little bit off, not a lot, in our EAV. But that's one of the key factors in determining what the rate is, obviously. And if there's a significant drop in that, then it does affect the rate. It's not quite as low. And so we, I just mentioned that. It's something we don't control. I think we've taken a conservative approach to that. I'll answer any questions tomorrow.
Before we turn it over for any questions, and I'm sure there will be some, because what I think Bill needs tonight is a consensus on whether or not we agree that his new option five makes some sense, following the Finance Advisory Committee's decision to go with another option, which had a considerably higher rate. Alderman Smith and I were at the FAC meeting, and we heard the discussion. Following that meeting, I know at least I had a discussion with City Manager Nicholas, and we were talking about the very same thing. And that is that, you know, folks feel like they're taxed up the wazoo. And at that point, prior to his conversation with our township tax assessor from DeKalb Township, and some of that information came forward in his presentation tonight, I felt that we needed to do something akin to what I think City Manager Nicholas has come up with tonight. So I'm very satisfied that we've expanded on what we brought to the Finance Advisory Committee. And I appreciate their chewing on this and spinning out something back to us, what we felt at that time, without some of this additional information, made sense. So I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I'll turn it over to any discussion. Any council, any council members. Alderman Perkins.
I really liked what you did, Bill, where you brought a specific example in and walked through it to demonstrate the impact, the real impact. There's a lot of numbers here, a lot of different ratios. But I think, thank you for that. I think it clarifies things for me and hopefully for a lot of other folks as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Verbig.
And it's very responsive to the feedback that I've received so far from Word Six. Phone conversation last night that touched on these elements. And all I will say is thank you, Bill. This option is ideal for what we have ahead of us and keeps us with that ability to provide high-quality services along the way.
Anything else? So, City Manager Nicholas, basically you're looking for some kind of consensus that this makes sense, and then this will be brought back in the form of part and parcel of the budget for 2021.
That's correct.
Okay. Consider the consensus tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have several resolutions. Item J, the first one is Resolution 2020-113, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you.
With DeKalb Township Road District pertaining to roadway construction responsibilities. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So, second?
It's been moved by Alderman Fanukin, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is pretty straightforward. We have, for decades and decades, worked collaboratively with our township partners. And in this case, we're talking about the DeKalb Township Road District and our public works department. And we do snow removal, and we touch and overlap, and we do things, I think, very pragmatically so that everybody benefits. And there's an agreement here. It's an intergovernmental agreement to deal with the year before us, the snow season before us. And the various responsibilities are spelled out in detail. Probably going forward, this may be the last intergovernmental agreement because this is so operationally baked in that it's probably something that if we ever had a problem, we'd be back to you. But I don't think that's likely. But we recommend your support and approval.
Great. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2020-114, authorizing a real estate purchase agreement with City Hall Suites LLC for the sale of real property located at 200 South Fourth Street in the amount of $600,000, Johann DeKalb Suites. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. Prior to City Manager Nicholas making a few remarks, we do have a couple of speakers, our folks who would like to speak to this item. The first one, on behalf of Bessie Krenopoulos, Mark Charvat.
I should start with the usual Bessie. Ay, ay, ay. She's right about this, though. And this, these are her comments, by the way. The fact that this entire proposal involving City Hall's move and subsequent proposal for erecting an apartment building in this square block has been rushed and pushed through with little public input from the beginning over a year ago is simply bad governance and can easily be referred to as a done deal. Thankfully, citizens stepped forward at the planning and zoning meeting, along with concerns from veteran planning zoning members, resulted in some alterations to the original plan. Regardless of these alterations, this matter should rightfully go back to the Planning and Zoning Committee and be vetted by that body, whose function is to advise the mayor and council. There is no question that citizens stepping forward will be helpful in protecting the neighborhood to some degree. What is sad is an unforgivable, and unforgivable is the fact that City Hall did not function as it should have to protect the interests of citizens whose investment in their properties is an important part of the local economy. City Hall resources should be used to protect the homeowner, not just the interests of a single developer. Good governance requires fairness and transparency, and this City Hall has not learned its lessons. Those comments from Bessie. Now, I'll add my two cents here. I have a problem with the numbers involved here. The fact that we're giving out $750,000 in tax increment financing, and Pappas is paying $600,000 for this property, something like that. I'm sorry, those numbers don't add up to me. Would you, would you invest in something like that, where you put forth $750,000 and you got back 600? Bad math on this. When I watched the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, I saw the citizens come up, and the citizens who spoke were generally not in favor of this. And I believe the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission was 3-3. So the fact that in this proposal, J3 and L2, it says the Planning and Zoning Committee voted 3-3, but recommendation, it's the recommendation. That sounds like a tie to me, which means it needs to go back to the Planning and Zoning Committee for further vetting. So I don't think we're ready to move on this yet. And I'm concerned personally about where all these cars are going to go. Where's the parking going to take place there? The fact that the residents were not happy with this deal, gosh, I'm sorry. If I lived around there, I would want residents, I would want homeowners in that area, not more apartments. You know, you want people who are invested in the community. Residents tend to be more life, lifelong investors in the property. Apartment owners tend to come here and go. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie and Mark. Rita and John McNatt, would you like to speak, please? Hi there.
Hello. So we were at the zoning, can I take this down? At the zoning committee meeting and expressed our concern. We live directly across from the building on the right, the single building, and directly across from it. And so we expressed our concerns, and John and Fody heard everything that we said, to the point where we have been emailing daily back and forth with what we would like to see, even as far as what color brick, what type of windows, what color trim. They have cut back the number of units, quite a bit. Twenty-some units have been cut back. They've added the gardens, they've left the gardens back in. They've cut back on the garages. We look at it every single day. So for you, for that to be said about the residents, we are fully in agreement with what the proposal is. And we, we will be looking at it for the rest of our lives. We know it will be maintained. We know that John and Fody listened to what we've said, and we are in full support of it.
Absolutely. That's, that's all I'm going to add. John's been fantastic with listening to us and, and our neighbors. And he's bent over backwards, I, I think, we think, in his design change. Hell, he dropped one whole building from the plan. So he went from four buildings to three buildings.
Right.
That's a, that was a big commitment to, to us from John. So we fully support it as being somebody like she said, that we'll be looking at the rest of our lives.
Thank you. We have one other speaker who would like to speak tonight to this item on the agenda. But let me say this. I was at the meeting where you folks spoke, and with John and Fody there, and, you know, if you've heard me say once, you've heard me say a dozen times, collaboration and communication, it is so darn important. And I was so impressed when I heard that a group of neighbors were able to meet with the Pappas Development folks and came up with a meeting of the minds. You know what, when I, when these things happen, I don't think everybody gets completely satisfied with what they want. But the meeting of the minds is so important. So thank you. Thank you for coming back. I think that shows a lot about who you are, frankly, that you came back after talking vociferously against what you saw initially. And now, after having spoken out and met with the folks, you came back with a, with a, with a changed stance. And believe me, I appreciate that. Now, we do have a virtual speaker, so I'm going to ask our IT folks to, if you put the Zoom information back up, and I understand that we have Kat Prescott, who would like to speak. Kat, are you there and can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, right. I, we hear you. You've got three minutes or less. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the work of Pappas and the citizens and the council to come to a more agreeable form of the proposed development in the blocks between Fourth and Fifth Street containing the old municipal building and large public garden. I am overjoyed to learn that the space occupied by the community garden will continue to be public space. I understand that the form of this public space might change over the years, but it's so important that we continue to have space that is for all in the neighborhood. Old-growth trees not only surround the perimeter of the lot, but are within it as well. That's a feature that cannot be purchased and cannot be built. Furthermore, outdoor activities are among the only possible ways for humans to see each other and experience time outside their houses right now. That said, there are a few more concerns that I want the council to hear. We are in the middle of what is becoming a long-term pandemic. While the EWHO and the CDC are suggested that HVAC systems might not spread the virus as previously feared, feared, these health organizations are in agreement that shared hallways, gym spaces, and so forth definitely do spread both this virus and all others. The proposed Pappas Development plans to have such shared, shared spaces in high-density housing. I hope that the development contains a plan for the management of safety of the people who would potentially live in these buildings. Lastly, perhaps leastly, I personally have a stake in this, as this is my home as well. I'm concerned about the safety of 50-plus vehicles deposited right in front of my house, where many, many of my neighbors and I walk every day. This development, as it was laid out, has made my location manifestly more unsafe with one of the most common causes of injury and death, the automobile. This isn't just a matter of not wanting my attractive view to change. If the exit for traffic is onto Fourth Street, where it does not face housing, or Grove Street, where there are trees and parking lots and businesses, neighborhood residents would be objectively safer. Our children would be objectively safer. Given the change that preserves community space, I am very happy to consider this development as part of my neighborhood. But these details are very important to me, my family, and my whole community. Please consider asking for more changes.
Thank you, Kat. Okay. Let's move along now. We've had a motion on the floor, a second. We've had public participation and public input yet this evening. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Nicholas, after which we can have some further discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three items on your agenda tonight that touch on this particular property. The first that's before you right now is the purchase agreement. And, and back in September, when the council unanimously approved the, the selection of the, the Pappas redevelopment proposal, it was, it was stated, I stated, that there would be other pieces that come back. One would be the purchase agreement. Another would, would be obviously the rezoning piece, which is the last item on your agenda. And then also the TIF agreement that obviously goes with the, the TIF proposal. So the first one before you tonight is the purchase agreement, and that's pretty straightforward. It, it follows other purchase agreements you've seen here with the sale of city property over the last couple of years. There is a proposed purchase offer of $600,000. That would be held in, held on deposit and credited to the buyer at the closing. The closing, though, is contingent upon the approval of the development proposal and, and also the TIF proposal. So we have to take, we have to take them, though, in, in sequence. And there is language in the purchase agreement, and there will be in the TIF proposal, that alerts the, the reader to the fact that there is a third piece that failing to get support would negate the, the purchase and, and the TIF proposal. So you can go ahead and vote up or down on this without jeopardizing decisions that you might want to make later on. So this, this particular proposal, I believe, is in the city's best interest, and I recommend your approval.
And I'll do my best to see that we have it in the proper sequence. Okay. Okay. So we've had motion on the floor, public participation, city manager's description, discussion now. Alderman Fanouken.
You know, Bill mentioned the meeting that we had in September where we discussed this. And at that time, the discussion regarding the three options that were presented, that this was the best long-term financial option for the city. Mr. Charvat mentioned the difference between what we're going to give in TIF versus what they're paying for the property. But in the long term, this versus the single-family housing was offered, or the other project by Mr. Mason, this had the best long-term financial return for the city of DeKalb. And I think that's why council supported it as much as we did. And I think that's something important to keep as we move along with this, with the proposals this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Alderman Perkins.
I just want to say kudos to, to the folks in the ward who spoke up, had your voices heard, influenced the process, and actually changed the outcome. Beautiful thing to see. Kudos.
Amen. Alderman Verbig.
Was the option that Kat Prescott brought up considered? She mentioned, no. Okay.
It's lots safer.
No way this is not. Fire will lose everything.
You want to open up a discussion here, Alderman Verbig?
No, no, he's described it. I was just wondering.
Are you satisfied?
Yes.
Because, so I was going to ask John.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call. Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2020-115, authorizing a redevelopment agreement with City Hall Suites LLC for redevelopment of property located at 200 South Fourth Street, Johann DeKalb Suites. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you've had a chance to look at the, the background, the agreement that is in the background is in the same format as other TIF agreements that we have done here in the last couple of years. And there is a clawback in the sense that if the projected increment does not in 20 years offset the, the $750,000 forgivable loan, that, then, that whatever balance outstanding existed would be due immediately. But that's not likely to happen. The, you may recall in the comparison of the three proposals, this is by far, as, as Alderman Fanouken mentioned, most productive in terms of annual tax increment. And the proposal is going to generate around $200,000 a year in new increment. After all, there's no property tax being paid on this site now, and hasn't been since the late 60s. And so it's, it's all pure in that sense. And anything that's done, even the demolition of the building and the cleaning of the lot, will generate some tax if it's privately owned. So we are going to see a, a big payoff for this that more than offsets the $750,000 loan, which is the, the heart of this particular redevelopment. And we recommend your support.
Okay. Alderman Morris.
I have a question. I don't know if I overlooked something here, and it's not largely material, but I'm, did I just see that it's, has the name been changed from Johann Suites to City Hall Suites?
City Hall Suites has all cities by company, will own.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Resolution number four, Resolution 2020-116, authorizing a purchase agreement with Midwest Salt Company for the purchase of Clear Southern Rock Salt for a period of one year, from January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2021, for, for the purpose of treating the city's drinking water. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbig. City Manager Nicholas, please.
This resolution and the next one involve some chemicals that we add to make your water cleaner and taste sweeter. This one in particular deals with the, the rock salt, which is used to soften the, the city's potable water supply. We've got a very good price from the company that currently has the contract, and that $110 per ton price is one we hope you will support. It's, it's a standout in, in the industry right now, so we recommend your support of this resolution.
Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Eight eye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number five, Resolution 2020-117, authorizing a purchase agreement for, with Charis Corporation for the purchase of phosphate for a period of three years from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2023, for the purpose of treating the city's drinking water. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, please.
We moved from salt to orthopoly blended phosphate. Phrase that doesn't just roll off the tongue so easily. But this is a key ingredient that we have that will basically freeze any iron that will build up inside ductile iron pipes, and keeps it from entering into the stream of the water and leading to, you know, coloring in the water and so forth. It's long been an additive. We went to the market, the company that currently has our contract, last, this current year was charging 41 cents a pound. They've gone up to 42 cents a pound. They're still substantially lower than the nearest bidder. We, despite that fractional increase, we believe it's a very fair price and recommend your approval.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye?
That resolution is approved. On our agenda, item six, Resolution 2020-118, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and the execution of an agreement with Lane Christensen Company for the repair and replacement of well parts and equipment in an amount not to exceed $61,162. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number seven, Resolution 2020-119, authorizing a standard agreement for the Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated, or with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for construction services at Illinois airports for design, special services, and construction phase engineering to resurface runway 2-20 at the decal Taylor Municipal Airport. Motion? So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas?
Just to say, the consulting firm, engineering consulting firm of Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly has been working with us for a number of years now. They are the designated agent for us in this particular project, which is the crack filling and the, it's really combined. I'm going to do crack filling and then do the resurfacing of runway 220. That's a newer runway, a northeast-southwest runway. And that will be done in 2021. This is all part of a sweep of federal and state processes, and we're at the point where the council needs to authorize the made or signed documents, allowing us to go to the next step, which is just maybe two steps away from the actual bidding, which should happen in February. So we recommend your support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye?
That resolution is approved. Number eight, Resolution 2020-120, approving a First Amendment to the Water Agreement between the City of DeKalb and Goldframe LLC to correct a Scrivener's Error, Project Ventus Facebook Data Center. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas?
You recall back in April, a number of ordinances came your way that paved the road for our annexation, rezoning, and development agreements relating to Facebook project. And at the time, we couldn't say who they were. And Goldframe was the corporate LLC that was doing business as a point for Facebook at that point. And they were also involved in the document that is the subject of this particular resolution, which was the Water Agreement, which was designed, first of all, to acknowledge that we have good water and abundant water, and also that we would be willing, because of the large plumbing capacity, to set aside a certain capacity so that if there was some catastrophic failure, there would be some way for them to continue to operate the, in the business that now we know who they are, Facebook is in. You don't see messages on the internet saying, "I'm sorry, excuse our dust," or "excuse our being out of service for a couple of days." It doesn't happen. It doesn't happen ever. So, water is one of the reasons why they, it helps cool their buildings. And there was a Scrivener's Error in one of the illustrative graphs in the exhibit. Kudos to them for finding it. We, none of us found it, all the people and the layers of experts looking at this at the time. In order, it's been recorded on our end. According to the original document, if there's to be any change, a comma, a period, or whatever, then both parties have to approve it. So, we bring it to you to be approved. This is the first, and hopefully it's the only one. And we ask for your unanimous support.
Paperwork, paperwork.
Yeah, it's important.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye?
That completes our consideration of our resolutions this evening. We now move to ordinances. We have one on second reading and one on first reading. The one on, or the second reading is number one, Ordinance 2020-064, Establishing Revised Compensation and Benefits for the Elected Officials of the City of DeKalb. We've already had Amy Levine, who spoke on this ordinance earlier this evening. We do have two folks in our audience tonight who would like to speak to it. The first one is Steve Capitan. First of all, let me have a motion on that floor.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Now, Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the concerns expressed earlier by Amy Levine about the lack of diversity of elected officials that such low salaries will ensure continues. The current council compensation is $100 per year more than it was 30 years ago, set by the council at $5,300 per year in 1990. Let me repeat that. The current council compensation is $100 per year more than it was 30 years ago, set by the council, at $5,300 per year in 1990. If those of you who support this are trying to set an example to city staff in these times of difficult budget challenges, the savings will be a drop in the bucket. I'm sure nobody, even Mr. Sharvat, would suggest that city staff salaries should be reduced to a level below what they were 30 years ago. Please reject this empty gesture. And by the way, you still haven't addressed the unsustainable status of the city clerk.
Thank you, Steve. The aforementioned, Mark Sharvat?
I can tell you for once, it's kind of nice to actually agree with what the mayor had to say at the last meeting. So, I'm actually on his side with this one. I think you guys are very misguided on this, because you're talking about, you changed the ordinance to lower it from 5% to 10%. And I've been hearing this whole, "We're all in this together." Where is the 10% reduction for city staff or all the bargaining units? I've heard of the Finance Advisory Committee that the salaries may remain level for the, some of the bargaining units, but I don't see a 10% cut that we're doing there. Let's be honest, it's not happening. If you were to lower, I'll tell you what, if you were to lower everybody's salaries 10% across the board, I might be in favor of this, but you're not going to do this. In fact, the City of DeKalb, I think I saw on one of the Alderman's Facebook pages, "We're hiring another management analyst." We've gotten along just fine without another middle management individual here with the city, so why not forego that hire? You've been getting along just fine without that. I also remind the mayor that something you have never done in your term, which you could do if you wanted, the mayoral veto. Consider using it for this one. And as Mr. Capitan suggested, we still have not addressed the status of the city clerk. The city clerk, the voters have actually spoken out on this two times. They want, number one, an elected city clerk. And I don't know about you guys, but I've always appreciated when we had a full-time elected city clerk. That is all.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, if you recall, we passed this by a 42 vote on the last meeting during first reading. We've had a lot of discussion on it. And let's continue with more. I'd open it up to any discussion, please. Alderman Verbic?
Well, I was not able to join you the last time this was discussed, but the way I've continued to view the compensation for elected officials is that it should reflect the movement of the general city staff. So, if we're talking with city staff and we're discussing the potential for a freeze, then I believe the elected officials should also be faced with a freeze. To Mr. Capitan's point, I agree that elected officials' wages could also be considered for an increase over time. So, as time goes on, as things improve, our revenues improve, and it's responsible to do so, I believe that elected officials should be considered for similar increases that city staff receive. So, the way that this reads this evening, I will not support it, because I just simply support freezing the elected official's wage.
Alderman McAdams?
So, I agree with Michael in that these are difficult times, and that in the future, we may consider raising the salaries. But right now, we are addressing the situation as it is. We have landed $1.3 billion in investment, and we have not seen a dime of it yet. But the money is coming. So, better days are coming for DeKalb. And when that happens, when those funds are available, we can address it. Right now, we have to live in the world in which we live, in which we are facing unprecedented economic and health crises. And I'm sure we can come back to it. You'll never have a hard time asking elected officials to raise their own salary.
Any further discussion? Alderman Favor?
What a difference four years makes. Former Sixth Ward Alderman, David Baker was proposing four years ago that we raise our salary, and that didn't receive any votes at that time. Yeah, I'm kind of torn on this. I certainly understand, you know, showing that we are, you know, taking a cut. I'm also not in agreement. I don't agree that the wage is what's limiting participants in the Aldermanic races. At the current salary, which if this vote is defeated, at the current salary, two years ago, three out of four of the Aldermanic races ran unopposed. Now, when they started, they had, you know, two or three candidates. But by the time the polling took place, you know, the others dropped out. So, I don't think it's a matter of pay. I mean, I look at our boards and our commissions. They're staffed with volunteers. We have a very diverse group. I look at the DeKalb School Board. They don't receive pay. They're a diverse group. You know, there's, I think there's more to it than pay. I do understand that the pay does help, you know, for those that need childcare and aren't able to work, or they work off-hours, that this might impact. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be, I'm still, I think I'm probably going to vote no. I, we just keep things the same.
Thank you, Alderman Favor. Alderman Perkins?
Again, I'd like to thank the people for speaking up. You know, I had a different view of it the first time through, and it was that we could lead from the front by saying, you know what, that if we're asking for cuts for other people, it's only fair that we take on something too. In no way did I see it as a way of maintaining the status quo or repressing anyone. So, I think people's voices matter. And speaking up is just, again, it's influenced how I viewed things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Alderman Smith?
I, it's funny how something, when you try and reduce what you pay, people come out of the woodwork and say they should be raising council's salaries. I've never thought that would ever come to the foresight of some of the people I talked to. I think I agree with several of the Alderman that it was a good gesture. It was, you know, we were meant to reduce, you know, the overall, we're trying to cut back. You know, this city needs to cut back, and I thought this is a good way. We're asking our, you know, everybody to freeze salaries, et cetera, et cetera. So, after some serious input, I will probably vote no on this as well.
Any further discussion? Alderman Fanouken?
I was the most vocal proponent of this ordinance change. I still am. Everything that I've seen from people and talked to people on a couple of social media sites and talked to other people have said that the amount of money that we're paid shouldn't be a draw for people to come on. The common phrase was, "It shouldn't be the money that makes you want to do this." You know, this isn't the city of Chicago where they get $110,000 each. This is the city decal lowering it a little bit. Yeah, mostly a symbolic issue, but still, all we ever hear is, "We need to cut expenses, cut expenses." Here we are trying to do that a little bit. No, it's not a lot of money each of the next two years, but it is something. So, I will still vote in favor, though it looks like it will probably fail.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If you recall, on first reading, approval was given to a 10% reduction in salaries starting in 2021, and that passed by a 42 vote. This is second reading. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Perkins?
No.
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
I have two aye and five nay.
That ordinance is defeated. Item L, ordinances, first reading. Number one, Ordinance 2020-066, approving the rezoning of 200 South 4th Street from the CBD Central Business District to the PDR Plan Development Residential District and the Plan Development Preliminary Plan, Johann DeKalb Suites. Motion, please.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams.
Mayor.
Smith. I beg your pardon?
It was Alderman Smith.
Oh, it was Alderman Smith?
Yes.
I'm sorry. This first reading of ordinance 2020-066, the motion was made by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, I think Councilmember Perkins put it exactly as I see it at this point. I think we had an occasion where there was a good, a lot, a good amount of conversation at the Plan Commission level, and it continued in the days that followed, and weeks really that followed. And the neighbors who were, had a front row seat to what was being proposed, met, expressed their opinions, and then as several revised designs came their way, they added more detail to their opinions, and ultimately a new rendering, showing a different layout in terms of the site, and then also the renderings, which interestingly comported with what the neighbors wanted. There was a little different design, but this is what the neighbors wanted. I don't know if they're still, I think they're gone now. But working with Dan Olson and being sort of on the sidelines, but watching very closely to these conversations, and the result of the conversations, I feel pretty strongly that we are at a point where this is an acceptable and agreeable way to redevelop that site, and that the money would be well-spent from our TIP program. So I recommend your approval.
Alderman Morris.
I, I just, I guess I want to echo what Alderman Perkins mentioned about the collaboration and communication, as you said as well, Mayor. I was really impressed as well. I listened to the, you know, whole Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I spoke with all of the no votes to understand why they really voted no. And it was exactly what Pappas has addressed with his adjustments. It was that it was too dense before, that it was not respecting the park, and that parking, along with the excessive density, was an issue. And so all of those appear to be addressed in this new situation. I'm not sure if Kat Prescott, who was on the call before, was able to hear Mr. Pappas's response when he responded to Alderman Verbic's question, which Alderman Verbic asked if, if, asked Mr. Pappas if there was a way to address her concern regarding there being two ways in and out of the space. And so Mr. Pappas addressed that by noting that for fire safety and for police safety, it was important to have two entry and exit points to the development, which I think makes a lot of logistical sense to me as well. I could see if you only add one entry point, then that could be extremely dangerous if no one can get in there. So I am very impressed with these adjustments and very pleased with it. I just want to demonstrate that.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved on first reading.
I'd like to move that we waive a second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yep.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved. We move along now to reports and communications, allowing our city council members and our staff to make any comments they'd like. First of all, our First Ward Alderman, Carolyn Morris.
I just want to note that the demolition has begun, and I haven't driven by there lately, but maybe it's even done by now?
Almost.
Almost done, on campus cinemas. So we're making a lot of progress in the First Ward. I just want to draw everyone's attention to that. Opportunity DeKalb is the organization that has formulated from the Antiglade North Revitalization Plans, final plans. So Opportunity DeKalb has been working very hard to make progress in that area, which is, the First Ward is predominantly comprised of. So I just want everyone to know that we are working very hard to make progress there, and things are coming together, and it's really exciting to see.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. We appreciate your help, everything you're doing in your world ward as it relates to the continued revitalization of Antiglade North. Alderman, Bill Finuchin, Ward Two.
Thank you. First of all, Alderman Morris, welcome back out of quarantine. I know what that's like, so I'm glad to see you here. Along the same line, though, as we've been reading, COVID-19 continues heading in the wrong direction. Please wear your mask if required. This week, there is free testing available the next three days. Tomorrow, it's at Sycamore High School, and then Wednesday and Thursday up in Genoa. Continue to support your local bars and restaurants through patio dining and carryout. It's very important for our local economy that we continue to support those so we don't lose those businesses in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Smith, Third Ward.
I want to say I sat through the webinar by Dr. Powell the other day, and I was very enlightened, and from the people that spoke and Dr. Powell's presentation overall. I won't go into a lot of details, but I think it's out there to be, for everybody else to view, right?
I don't know what to say.
I think it was five, almost pushing 600 participants, am I correct?
Over five.
Yeah. It was very enlightening. So if anybody gets a chance to review it, it would be a great idea for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Perkins, Fourth Ward.
No report.
Scott McAdams, Fifth Ward Alderman.
No report.
Mike Verbic, from our Sixth Ward.
Well, speaking of demolition, about a year ago, I reached out to the owner of the Travel Inn in Ward Six in DeKalb, just offering if there was anything we can do to help with that property. I want to thank City Manager Nicholas and staff for working with the owner of the Travel Inn and helping facilitate now hit the property and its demolition. The fence is now up around the entire perimeter of the property as of today, and demolition should begin soon. Also, I want to thank Andy Rye. Andy's done a great job with getting workers in place to neaten up our islands in Ward Six in the Knowles. We've had, we had a challenge with the contractor that was set up to do that work this year, and I'm happy to say that we've got somebody else doing the work and doing a terrific job. Thanks again, Andy.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Faver, Seventh Ward.
Yeah, tomorrow night is the Airport Advisory Board Meeting out at the airport. It's at 7:00 PM in the East Hanger. So if you want to come out and see what's going on at the airport, I would invite you out to meet.
Thank you. And I believe today was the first day, was it not, Andy, of our leaf collection around the city? So congratulations. Let's hope the snow stays away and allows us to pick up most of the leaves around town this year. Looking out here, I see a lot of masks and of different varieties. There's going to be even more masks this Saturday as some of our trick-or-treaters, those who have been given permission from their parents to go out and do their deed, if you will, 3:00 to 6:00 PM in the City of DeKalb. 3:00 to 6:00, should still be light by 6 o'clock, just getting a little bit dark. We ask everyone to be safe, wear their masks of all kinds, shapes, et cetera, for our Halloween effort. And I tell you, I am so proud of this council. I have been proud since the day I was sworn as a mayor to know who I was going to work with. And I tell you, the variety of opinion, the ability, joining someone in our audience tonight, to change when we hear things and when we collaborate and when we communicate, it is so important. So kudos, to use your terminology, Alderman Perkins, to our city council. I'm really, really proud of you guys. City Manager Nicholas.
Just a couple of quick things. The big three are coming down. The cinema's almost down, and Travel Inn on the way, and 912 Edgebrook, we're out to bid for the demolition bids there. The funding is now all in place, and thanks to Joanne Rouse for all of her help with the CDVG funding. It's been so vital to that. So by the end of the calendar year, as we had discussed back in January and February, we hope to get all three of those removed, and better things hopefully in the offing. One other thing that was on our minds when we were talking at the Finance Advisory Committee about levies was where we would be with Moody's, because as you know, back in September of 2018, the city's bond rating was put into the doghouse, I guess you would say. We had a negative outlook, and the promise was that Moody's would be back in about two years. Well, it's been about two years, and of course, we probably prompted a new review by going for the refunding. That is a big part of the budget process currently. And Moody's had their interview with me and with Representative of the Bond Agency that we've been working with. We spent weeks pulling together some presentation books for them, 30 pages or so, nice colored pictures, lots of data on what we've done in the last couple of years. They were impressed. They removed the negative outlook. That's the good news. The bad news is, because we live in the state of Illinois, because the state of Illinois' fiscal picture is not right, and unfortunately because the pension crisis, which is at the legislature's feet, not ours, for fire and police pensions, is not resolved, and at this point, it's not clear when it will be resolved. They knocked us down from May 1 to May 2, and they have done rating downgrades across the state, and that's what they're supposed to do. Because the people who buy the bonds that we're refunding, or if there was a new bond issue from some other place, could be anywhere in the world, they're not going to take the time to call the City of DeKalb and ask us, how's it going with Facebook? How's it going for our, they look at the numbers, they make their judgments. There are important fiscal decisions that they make, and there can't be any doubt. So they were very friendly and very upbeat about our future, but they said, sorry, this is what we have to do. This is our business. So we respect that. My feeling is that in a couple of years, we'll be able to go back and fix that.
The pension situation is a situation that is, it's a dilemma for municipalities across the state.
And why would...
And the ball, the ball is in Springfield. The ball is in Springfield. Bill?
And I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to, but the reason Moody's is concerned for us in that context is that the most reliable recurring source of general fund revenue is the property tax. You can vote that every year, whether you vote it too high or too low, you can still vote it. Sales and use taxes are voted basically by the consumer. You're never too sure, you know, where you're going to be. And we've had to rely more heavily on sales and use taxes, which are a volatile, variable source because of the conditions, economic circumstances we find ourselves in, and because we're doing the right thing when it comes to the property tax. So that's good for the taxpayer from the years that Moody hears from, that presents us as having heavy reliance on a source of revenue that we don't control. So there you are.
Thank you. After I called on City Manager Nicholas, Alderman Verbic sort of slid his chair over here and said, don't forget the clerk. How could I ever forget Lynn Fazekas? Lynn, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, but thanks for asking.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would entertain a, we have no executive session tonight, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic and seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned.